Good evening. The regular planning meeting of the Planning Commission is called to order May 10, 2022, 7:00 p.m. We will take a moment of silent prayer and/or meditation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Commissioner Shelby Williams.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Paulina, can you please call roll?
Good evening, Madam Chair and Planning Commissioners. Commissioner Williams, present. Commissioner Gutierrez.
Here.
Commissioner Heng, Vice Chair Lewis.
Here.
And Chair Becerra.
Here. Tonight, we have the minutes from the Regular Planning Commission meeting on April 12, 2022. Does anyone have any changes to the minutes? The minutes are approved as submitted. Oral communications is a time when any member of the public may speak to the Commission on any matter within the scope of duties assigned to the Commission relating to non-agendized or consent calendar items. Other matters included on this agenda may be addressed when that item is under consideration for all oral communications. Oh, under consideration. For all oral communications, the chairperson may impose a reasonable limitations on public comments to assure an orderly and timely meeting. The Ralph M. Brown Act limits the Planning Commission and staff's ability to respond to public comments at this meeting. Thus, your comments may be agendized for a future meeting or referred to staff. The Commission may ask questions for clarification if desired at that time. By policy of Commission, oral communications at this time on the agenda is limited to a total of 15 minutes. Consent calendar, there are no items. We have no items on the consent calendar this evening, so we will proceed to the public Paulina, are we still going to wait for Joanne for the staff?
She's here.
Okay, I didn't see her behind Baron.
Madam Chair, Shelby doing the presentation.
Good evening, Honorable Chair, members of the Planning Commission, and also members of the public. I'll go ahead and go over the history briefly of the city's ADU ordinance. The City Council last adopted an amendment to the city's ADU ordinance in April 2020. And this amendment was a result of a virtual meeting that the city had with the state, where the state directed the city to amend certain portions to make the city's ordinance compatible or in line with state law. On February 2022, the city received a letter from the Department of Housing and Community Development. In that letter, the state had identified a list of items that the city is required to change pertaining to the ADU ordinance. This was the first written letter that the city received from HCD. The city did respond to the letter on March of this year and also had a virtual meeting with HCD's staff. We were told that our response was sufficient and that we were told that we would not receive another written response from HCD until the Planning Commission or the City Council review the ordinance and the City Council adopts the ordinance and a copy of that ordinance is submitted to the state. So this ordinance is a result of that meeting. The changes listed on the projector are a summary of what is being changed. It's mostly clarification and that these items that are being clarified are already items that the planning staff is already enforcing it in this way, with the exception of the last point, which is to clarify the exterior staircases are not allowed between the side property line in the existing building, but it would be allowed in the rear. The third point for residents in the audience or watching at home, the third point to clarify that separate cells of ADUs are allowed in certain instances. And these instances are certain situations where the property is owned by a nonprofit such as Habitat for Humanity, and they are building housing. And in that instance, the state law or the government code does allow sales of ADUs as separate properties. With this, staff did receive a counter inquiry from a resident about the possibility of including additional changes to this ordinance pertaining to the location of ADUs on properties accessed from private streets. The property owner is here tonight to discuss her proposed change, and she will speak after the presentation. With this, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission approve Resolution 22-6108, recommending that the City Council adopt Code Amendment Number 22-02. If the Planning Commission has any questions, I'm available to answer.
Thank you for the staff report. Does any member of the Commission have any questions for staff?
Sure, I have one question, and it just pertains to the changes in Section 26-685.33, and I think this is Sub 2. I was just trying to figure out, we seemingly have gotten rid of the prohibition on separate utilities and metering, and then instead just say that they cannot have an address that's separate and apart. Is there any particular reason why that change is in this draft? And I didn't see that in the letter from the California Department of Housing and Community Development.
Because when the City Council had adopted the ordinance, that the separate metering was removed and replaced with not allowing the separate address for ADUs, which was the case it has always been, but it was accidentally left out when the adopted ordinance was placed on second reading.
Okay, so I guess I'm just trying to figure out, why is the prohibition on having more than one meter being removed? That's what I was trying to figure out. I know the address, what I'm trying to figure out.
Yes, we can keep that in there, but having a separate, I guess, not allowing a separate address, it incends a prohibition of having a separate meter. But in this case, if it was pointed out by the state, we can say that it's not a city policy, it's a public utility policy, since the city does not own a public utility.
Understood, okay.
I guess to add to his question is that he's asking, why are we not allowing the second metering? I guess my question is, it's advantage to have a second meter, is that correct?
Because in order to have a second meter, you need a separate address, and ADUs are accessory to the primary structure.
So if the mail comes in and there's an ADU or someone's living in the back, you're using one mailbox?
Receiving of mail is a post office policy, so that's not in the city's purview.
But did we come up with that, like not allowing another address? Who come up with that, I guess? Because normally in ADU, they normally have an A for a primary or a B.
Not in this city.
But utility company does not like that?
No, they don't like A and B or a half or a quarter. They want an actual address.
Well, that's what an A and B is, right? Let's say it's 300A, 300B, that would be a completely separate address, whether it's A or B. Then how does a condo do it? It's all 1,000, and then it's ABC to...
Would it be, I'm sorry, would it be able to like 800 and 800 and a half?
Unit 1, unit 2.
They don't like half addresses.
Wait, but we're not utility companies, so I guess my question comes in is, as a Planning Commissioner, and is it advantage to have two metering? Because it is cheaper, because they clock you in at a certain level when you're using certain utility or water.
So the entire, I guess, intent when the not allowing a separate address comes to play is that when people are renting out an ADU to somebody they trust, people are more likely to rent out an ADU to somebody they trust if it's the same address because of the utilization of utilities.
So legally, ADU isn't considered, it doesn't make the property legally two units? Is it still a single-family residence with an ADU, or is it considered?
An ADU is a second unit, but it's accessory to the primary structure. An ADU cannot exist if there is no primary structure.
So again, so legally, would that still be just a single-family residence with an ADU, like a casita or something?
Yes.
Okay.
But the state made it so that it can be rented, but to me, I guess my question is, the state is not coming in to say that we shouldn't have two addresses, but the city did, right? Is that where we're coming to?
The state says that it's up to the city whether or not we issue a separate, whether or not we want to issue a separate address for ADUs.
Okay, I understand that this code exists because we don't have two addresses already. That's why we kind of have to cross out the second utility. I get that part. But I guess the first question is, how did we not come up with two addresses? Most cities who has ADU now do have two addresses so that they don't have to have a second meters, but they can if they wanted to.
Yes, the intent when this was first adopted by the City Council, the intent was to retain as much local control as possible and to maintain the single-family residential zoning within the city.
I guess by not having two addresses, local control?
Yes.
So what happens if you number them, like unit 1, unit 2, like condos?
With condos and with apartments, they are different to begin with. There's a lot of joint in common.
Because I know right now in the state of California, there's a lot of Fair Housing Act complaints being filed with the Commission up there for issues between the landlord and the main house compared to the back house, and issues in separating the bill and the mail and stuff like that. So I know there's a lot of legal issues there, so remain open on that subject.
I guess my concern is just regarding, for example, water. We're in a drought state, per se, and if they're limiting you to like a thousand, I don't know, what's the measurement of water, a cubic meter or feet?
That's too long.
That's too long. Most apartments.
But wait, hold on, hold on for one sec. So if they're allowing you for a certain unit of water usage, let's say, for example, a thousand unit, and if you have two units, you get fined, don't you, if you use more than so many units of water? Is that an advantage on a resident's point of view if it were rented anyway?
If it was rented, and if they share the same meter, they're more likely to rent it to somebody that they trust, that would...
It has nothing to do with trust. It has to do with fairness, how much it costs, right, Joanne? I mean, it's a bill, it's a bill. You pay no matter what. Like, if it comes $50, but if not having two units, I believe it may cost more for the homeowner and also the renters.
That would be an agreement between the landlord and the tenant, how they devise the utility bills, you know? It could be that the landlord pays it all and the renter pays a lump sum, or that they show each other the utility bill and share the cost that way. It's really, or a portion of it, it would be an agreement between the landlord and tenant, how they...
Oh, I understand that. Utility bills and fees that we don't have to deal with, but I'm just saying that fairness comes into play, I think, that if someone were to live in those units, the main house and also the guest house, the fees, that is not imposed by us, it's most likely imposed by the utility company. If you use past certain units, the fees will go up.
So, yeah, that's a good question. I think I know the answer to that question. So when it comes to those who are renting ADUs or separate properties in the back, most of the time, the landlords or the owner of the property in the front is paying the water bill. When it comes to electricity, the landlord has the option to request from Edison a separate meter for the back house if the landlord does not want to be responsible for putting property in the back for the electricity bill or gas bill. And that all relies within the owner, because, for example, a gas meter is obviously going to cost money to integrate that into the ADU, but it's possible. And I think it's more of, I guess, a security caution that our city has to ensure that these ADUs are not just being rented out to anyone in the streets. So I think the good thing is, is that the owner of the household does have the option to call Edison and request for their expector and engineers to go out and install a second meter, if that's what the owner wants.
So the, excuse me, the applicant, you're asking, oh, I'm sorry, so I'm asking Joanne. So they're asking for separate meters, everything, water, gas, electricity, everything. I'm sorry, who is? For the ADU, is this what we're asking for?
No, they don't want to have a second.
Can I just mention, the proposal that is in front of us does not have any prohibition on the number of meters. The only reason I ask the question is purely because this version, as presented, does not include the prohibition that was in the prior iteration. The current law has that prohibition.
But also, Joanne is saying that because we don't have the address, utility company may not allow you to have a second meter.
That's correct. Utility companies do not allow a second meter unless the city issues a separate address.
Edison, we know that from Edison?
No, no.
So basically, the second address is the city is saying that we shouldn't have.
Well, the second address is the city saying that the ADU is an accessory to the primary unit, because having a separate address means can look as if the ADU is separate from the primary unit. So that's one. And then, two, we want to prohibit having, I guess, in essence, the city may want to prohibit requiring a separate meter or allowing a separate meter without saying that a separate meter is allowed or is not allowed because a separate address is required by the utility company, and the utility company is not owned by the city. So the state cannot go back and say, you're not allowed to say, the city is not allowed to prohibit having a separate utility because we have that in the code. But the state does allow, and specifically states that the city, the local government or city can require or has the option of whether or not they would issue a separate address, because addressing is a city policy.
So if this code, if we all decided that we should have a second address, like an A or a B, we can change it tonight as well, is that correct?
Yes, if the Commission votes for that.
Okay, all righty, thank you.
You know, my take on this is that if you spend a lot of money to add an ADU, which they're not cheap, and maybe you did originally build it for a family member or an elderly parent, but at some time, you're going to want to have, maybe rent it out and use it for income. I've seen it before, I have rental income, and whereas there was a tenant who I was evicting, and then she just let the water run 24/7 till I got her out, and the bill was exorbitant. So my opinion, you know, even if you had, you know, your son or college student back there, you know, a family member, I think it would save a lot of arguments if they did have separate utilities and make them accountable for what they use or spend, but anyways.
But let me get this right, though, Joanne, if we were to change this, it is possible to, I mean, that's what we're here for, to change the code or to update the code?
It would be possible if the Planning Commission has a consensus and votes to make the change, but the City Council would also have to accept the change.
I understand.
The City Council has the option of not making the change.
Correct, I understand, because we do recommendations for the changes, but then they had the final...
Yes.
Say, in terms of adopting the code?
Yes.
Okay, I guess, on page nine of the code, I'd like to talk about number B and number 11B, and it's, and also 1. 11B is the 16-feet height. So how do we, I guess one of the question is, how do we accommodate hillside area and, I mean, certain area has a certain heights, and how do we accommodate second story? It seems like, which is I, or 1, all second-story additions to an existing residence, it's allowed or it's not allowed, or through the administrative use permit?
It's only allowed if it's attached to the house and if it's on the second floor of the existing house. It would not be allowed, unless the existing house has a flat roof in its modern style, it would not be possible to build a 16-foot, two-story ADU, which is the height limitation for detached ADUs.
So if a resident wants to, let's say, do a two-story, like, you know, how do they go about doing that, besides the fact that if their main house is not a second story already?
They would have to submit for a second unit review application and an AUP application. So in speaking with the ADU, the AUP application is discretionary. An AD, but the ADU is not, the second unit review application is not discretionary, it's basically a zoning clearance-type application. And the reason why an AUP is required for a second-story ADU is because the city requires an AUP for all second-floor additions. So it's not treated any differently from other additions to the house.
So, okay, so, okay, I guess we can talk about that later, or...
No.
No, AD. You're talking about the administrative use permit.
AUP, administrative use permit.
Any more questions for staff? Okay, so now we will open public hearing, and we'll hear testimony from the applicant.
I'm sorry, there is no applicant.
Okay, so the script, okay, so...
Just from the resident.
Just from the resident. So we have, it doesn't say if you're for or against, so we'll start with Ian Pike.
Thank you, and good evening to Commissioner and all the Commission. These are my talking. So it's interesting, the conversation that come up, because I think it kind of applies to my situation. So I'm Ian Pike, have been a West Covina resident 37 years, 34 years at the current address, and I'm here to say I truly appreciate your consideration for adding a new provision to the ADU amendment, one for special circumstances such as my situation. And just wanted to share that, and others probably have a similar situation. Before I go through that, I just want to say, discussion around the metering, I hadn't even thought of that, but what a great point, so thank you for that, because the cost of water, electric, and everything, having separate meters, I think, is fantastic, and it cuts a lot of arguments out, a lot of arguments that can lead to nasty situations. I think that's a great point that was raised, never thought of it. So I have a 96-year-old mother-in-law and carer that would like to live with us and leverage the ADU opportunity. My standalone garage, and I'll, these are some pictures of my standalone garage, my standalone garage is 100 foot away from my house, sits 15 to 20 foot below my house, and backs into a hillside, and I've got some pictures that try and share that. I'm on a very narrow road, and you cannot park on it due to safety issues and the need for fire trucks and utilities to have unimpeded access. I would like to build the ADU on top of our garage, and that's why what was just discussed is so relevant. Instead of converting my garage, which is what I understand is allowable today, it would still conform to what I believe is a 20-foot garage height roof. Why do I want to add on top? We want to keep our cars in the garage, why is that? I have a son who's already had a catalytic converter stolen off his car, not pleasant, several thousand dollars to put that back on. I want to avoid that happening to us. It's rampant today, I even believe West Covina City has warned about the number of catalytic converters being stolen. It's everywhere for the precious metals that are in them. No neighbors can see our garage because of the trees and the hillside that the garage backs into. I can pretty much walk off my hillside near enough onto the roof of my garage, so it wouldn't burden anyone. I even took the liberty of talking to my neighbor, and they would approve it and sign anything if it was necessary. This allows me to continue to park our cars in the garage, avoid theft and damage to them, saves me washing them all the time and wasting water, and supports keeping West Covina beautiful versus cars all over the place, right? I don't think it's pleasant to see cars all over the place. It's much nicer to have them tucked away. So I truly appreciate your consideration and guidance, hope you find this to be a reasonable request. I wasn't sure how else to approach this, and thought the timing of this planning session was ideal. So thank you very much.
Brenda Watson?
Hi, my name is Brenda Watson, I'm at 3150 East Cortez Street.
I'm sorry, could you pull the mic closer so we can hear you?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
My name is Brenda Watson, I'm at 3150 East Cortez Street in West Covina, I've been there 17 years. And the reason I'm here tonight is because I'd like to request an acceptance for a change in the zoning code. She has my property up on the screen. She has my property up on the screen. There's a drive on easement that comes down to the property to the right-hand side where she has the arrow, and then the property comes into my garage. On the right-hand side, there's a bit of open space and I would like to put a 1,200 square foot ADU there. Based on what I have found out from the planning department, the way they have it zoned, that is the entrance of my property and they consider it the front of the house, when actually the front faces Cortez, where you see the little cutout, that the front of the house faces Cortez Street. So the garage end is to the right-hand side where the open vacant space is where I'd like to place the ADU. The property is very tight up into the southeast corner of, southwest corner of the property, so there's not a lot of space behind the property. That's the change I would like to see, place the ADU. This easement ends at my property line, there's a block wall that separates the street behind where my house sits, is Prospero. I think at one point years ago before the houses were built behind my property, that that was actually an easement that went all the way through to Prospero, but it, it ends at my property now. So when you come through my gate, which is up at the front of the easement, I'm, I'm the only one there. So no one really sees my property unless they're coming to see me.
That's a long driveway that you have that goes all the way up?
Yes, it's about, the easement's about 800 to 1,000 feet to my property.
Is that a hill that goes all the way back or is that, is it flat?
It's flat, pretty, it's actually kind of dilted.
It looks like a slope.
Where you see the green, it's kind of a dilt there, but it's, I think it's dilt because I get a lot of water runoff there from the houses behind me. That actually is being addressed right now by the city.
So hold on, Paulina, do you have the marker? Can you point, and the, the pointer, please, Joanna?
Yes.
Can you point where her frontage, or at least right now, she has a flag lot and her house is built tucked to the corner, which to me I thought was the back, but really it's not. So where is her frontage, or at least the city consider? So that would be the frontage?
The front door, this is her front door.
Where the red mark is.
So that would be?
Here drop red, the front door is right across from that, facing Cortez.
Joanne, if that is the front of her lot right now, how can she pass zoning code in the past when she built her house, when the, when the backyard needs to have 20-something feet? So if you look at it right now, no matter how the house is oriented, I believe her front should be the front, which is next to that gray house. Can you point that area? That area right there? No, no, way up where there's a little kink?
Top, left corner.
That's another property.
It's a different property.
No, no, a dotted line, basically.
The, the, her property, the existing structure is legally non-conforming.
The, her existing lot is the dotted red line?
The dotted red line, yes.
So the front of her house is where the driveway is at, correct?
The, the front of her, the frontage, the front setback is taken from?
From there.
From here.
How can she build a house like that, even if it's in the past, we need to have a back setback? And right now, it looks like five feet, which is, should be the size?
It's more than that.
How many feet is it your back right now?
There's 10 feet on the end, between the end of my house to the left-hand side and my house, and then in the back, it's quite a distance.
Joanne, can you, I'm sorry, can you point it to the backyard, the back setback side? That area right there?
Yeah, it's 10.
How many feet?
10 feet.
So it's 10 feet, normally West Covina, especially in that area, don't we have at least 20-something feet?
Only for, only for two stories.
Otherwise it's five feet.
It's five feet, yes.
Got you, okay.
So what, what defines a backyard? A fence?
No.
There's a fence behind my house.
Okay, but where you want to put the ADU at? That's the front of the house, right?
This is the front, yes, the front.
It's on the end.
The front yard is the front setback. So to clarify, Chair, if I may, this is the section that she, that Ms., I'm sorry, Wat- Watson would like to change and make an exception for properties located on private streets.
So can she apply for a variance to do the planning process?
She is able to apply for a variance, yes.
So that's probably the appropriate time to discuss this, but, but you gave, it's a good point and you pointed out.
But does the code allow for variance, Joanne?
Yeah, if you have a hardship.
Yes, if there is a, if there is a hardship related to the, to the site, topography, sighting of that house.
Basically, the way the property sits, and this house was built in 1960, I purchased it in 2005, but with the zoning the way it is, it's basically rendered my property useless. I can't do anything with it and I pay a lot of taxes to live here.
Wow.
It's the size of the lot?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, sizes, how, how large is the lot?
It's almost an acre. There's a lot of space on the garage end and that's why I wanted to place it there. And speaking with Joanne, I can place an ADU right in the middle of my property in front of my house, which doesn't make a lot of sense.
Well, I think you have a unique situation and to change a code like that, that will allow anyone to, to do something like this, which may not have a, a situation that you're facing right now. So I will, I will encourage you to work with our city staff, which I know they're, will be happy to help you and, and go through the variance process if, if that's an option going, going forward to make this happen.
Well, I was hoping that I wasn't going to be forced to spend a lot of money to get this accomplished because it can be very expensive.
So Joanne, are we hearing this because, to avoid applying for the variance? Or is there something that we can do to go around that?
Hold on, let me try to understand you for a little bit. So you're, you're basically trying to saying that even if you request for a variance, which would come in front of us, and if the five of us do not agree on your plan, then you may be basically not being able to build?
Correct.
It, okay, that, that.
The reasoning behind the variance and why the state of California allows for variance for setbacks and for yards is because, as Joanne mentioned, when you have a hardship, either because of the topography or the shape of the property, they've created a vehicle which you can ask for an exception.
They, I understand that the resident can ask for it, however, it's still up to five planning commissioners to?
Right, but there's setbacks that have to be made for variance. And as Joanne said, they, it takes into consideration just based on the several findings.
Yeah.
The unique circumstances.
Today, we can't tell her yes or no because she hasn't applied for a variance for us to have the authority to vote on the matter.
What I'm hearing is that she can go ahead and get it approved, but it'll cost her more money to do it. She's already spoken with Joanne and they've already given her instruction that she is allowed to do it.
But there's also a chance that she won't be able to?
Am I correct?
There's two processes, so she's trying to include it in this ordinance update so that the language is in there that would then, once that's adopted, she would then be able to apply. The other process is the variance and that would be a separate application that she would have to apply for and come before the planning commission and ask for that approval.
And just to tack on to that, I think Commissioner Williams said it well, this is a zoning code, so we're trying to put a code which applies to the entire city at this point, and, and the commission can certainly consider the, the proposal. There is, the variance procedure specifically a relief valve because there's a recognition by everyone that the zoning code is not always a perfect fix for every, for 100% of circumstances. So the variance does provide a mechanism for situations where there's a hardship and a unique property. Ultimately, it's up to the commission how you want to resolve this.
So, exactly, so if we change the code, we're changing it for the whole city, not just for her house.
Well, what are the specifications for, I mean, you said unique property, it's, so it's not going to be for every property, it's not going to affect everyone. What, what, what constitutes a unique property?
So I believe the language that she's proposing, Joanne, if you can get it, put it back on screen.
It would be an exception where the property is located on a private street, the accessory dwelling unit will not be visible from the public right-of-way and the accessory dwelling unit is no closer than a, a certain number of feet from the private street. So there's no, so this?
I think that will cover it better. This one?
Well, this, this would be, this would, this would address Ms., Ms. Watson's request, but again, it, it would impact the entire city for other, other properties within, within the entire city.
Well, if there was incorporated size of the lot, you know, it would have to be over a certain size, I mean, she definitely has a very large lot there.
You can add that as well.
The other reason in speaking with Joanne was that I can build 800 square feet anywhere on the property and not come before the planning committee as far as getting approval, but I would like to build 1,200 square feet because I have the space. So instead of building 800 in that same spot that I'm requesting to build 1,200, so that was a other issue that I spoke to her about.
So if she built 800 square feet, she doesn't have to get a variance?
That's correct.
Okay, well, that's.
Because there is an exception.
That answers our question, I shouldn't.
But also, also, Joanne, I'm, I'm curious, can you put that, that little section back up? So basically, this little section will cover all the people who basically have flag lot like hers, is that correct?
It wouldn't.
I mean.
It, it couldn't, it would just be private streets.
Streets, you would have to have.
And there are, what, maybe a half a dozen of those that I can think of?
That would be a unique situation. There's not that many.
It's not that many, but at least it covers some of the area that we have, private street area, what have you.
Well, you know, we're, we're going to be having a code meeting on Thursday and maybe this is something that we should bring up to make it, you know, if it's going to affect every, you know, and again.
But this is related to, this is related to ADU, right?
No, I know, but it still relates, we're changing a code.
Code anyway, giving a code update.
So what I would propose is that we take this up on Thursday with the committee and then that way, and I, I do think that it's, your property is definitely large enough to where that would, you know, be something that should not be not approved, but we, again, whatever we decide here affects all the residents, so, and we are updating codes, you know, as we speak, so we'll be meeting on Thursday and we will definitely bring this up for the committee.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. So can we motion to?
You have to close the public.
Okay. He has a question, so.
I'll do it where it's close, sir.
Sure.
So, I actually like the wording there, I'm on a private street, I pay for the road to be tarmacled and everything, and so the key word there was unique situation. I don't, the city doesn't pay for street lighting or anything for me, I'm on a private road, and no one comes down that road except there's a couple of houses on there and my house is an easement for those. And so, I mean, to me, if, if it's approved for one, it should be approved for another, whether I'm building on top or not of my garage, no one can see my garage. And it's my road in front of the garage and I just give the rights for houses way on down to be able to have access to it. So that, this lady's situation applies to me, she was way better ed than me, I didn't know you could do all that fancy stuff.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Pike? No, we didn't ask you any questions the first time, do we have any questions for?
Did you get a chance to see the pictures?
Yes. I, I do have one question though, and you're basically, I guess your question is, your situation and her situation is a little different because, I'm not sure which side is the front, but hers, her house is built way toward one side, or shift toward two side of her lot, it seems like. But your situation is you want to go higher, so it's a little different than her situation, well, somewhat similar.
Right.
The road is similar, but.
It's 27 steps for my brother-in-law and I to carry a 96-year-old mother-in-law up to our house to get her in for Thanksgiving and Christmas. It'd be much better if I didn't have to do that and it'd be much more comfortable for us. And again, no one would see it, we're not going higher than what the roof is limitation for a garage today, not going higher in that, and it, it just makes life a lot easier for us, so, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Any more questions? We're good? We'll close public hearing now and open commission discussion.
I have a question for staff. I, I certainly share some of the concerns that were, that were brought up today by members of the public who spoke, but my, my overarching question is there's a, there's a number of properties, not just those on private streets, that have this particular issue. And so my, my initial reaction to that is obviously if, since, since the, the ADUs that would be, I guess prospectively put in front yards would be, in most situations, viewable from the public right-of-way. My question is whether or not the city could impose some sort of, some sort of design review subcommittee or something like that requirement such that, that, that subcommittee could potentially consider those things and that would not offend current state law by, by creating some sort of barrier to entry. And I, I think that that would be my, my biggest concern about having something like that, and perhaps that, that's a question for another time, but I, I think that that would be the concern because I, I would say that if we're, if we're going to put an ADU in someone's front yard, obviously, you know, I, I think that the state is fairly clear that it wants, it wants people to have the opportunity for these things, but ultimately there certainly would need to be some sort of community standard with regard to doing something like that, provided that the state doesn't go in and completely preempt us. So would something, would something along the lines of having, having some sort of, some sort of fast-tracked, fast-tracked consideration in front of design review subcommittee offend the current statutory language that is, that is set forth at the state level for, for ADUs for non-conforming lots? And I think that's really the, the overarching question here, because I don't think that, that we can deprive members of the community of notice and opportunity to be heard on these types of things. I understand the exception that was proposed tonight by a member of the public, I feel like that, that is probably an exception to an exception to an exception, and perhaps that, that merits consideration on its own, but my, my overarching concern is for the number of lots and I, I, I can say confidently, in, in the member of the public who spoke tonight in the neighborhood that she lives in, there are a number of those lots that fall into that category that have, that have view from public right-of-way. So I, I think that's the overarching question. And I, I don't know if you guys have an answer, or maybe that's just food for thought for another time.
I think in this, in this situation.
I think in this situation and the code that you put up earlier, it's basically saying "private road." So the lot right now, in her lot or in that particular code... Joanne, can you bring that code back up? She's basically landlocked, foreside... Well, not landlocked because she has a driveway, but basically, she's foreside that is not exposed to the public, only the driveway. So this code is basically for that instance, that they have a driveway only, and the lot is inside, and they're not facing the public right-of-way or what have you, the house. It will be blocked by the house in the front and the house right to the left to the back. Seems like she's surrounded by all houses, and she's tuck in there. So it's for this situation... The reason I'm saying this is because when we go to design review, it's very subjective, and it's up to two people. If those two people said no, then she won't be able to do it. And also, even if the variance come in front of us, there's five of us, and you need three to vote yes. And if we say no, then she won't be able to do what she wanted to do. Versus if it's in the code, then she by rights has the abilities to build what she wanted to build in a situation that her lot is tugged inside with a little private driveway that is only the fire department can get through and her can get through. So it's not really facing the public, and it's not putting in front of someone's front yard because this code is not for some... It's set, except in instances where the property is located on a private street. And you can put in there that you cannot put it in the front yard that you can see from the public, which you can't because the driveway is the front yard that the public can see. That's it. Nothing else. If you look through a private driveway, most of the time, you see a little sliver of a house, and the rest of them is driveway. So I think this code, it fit what you need because if not, the other... Yes, she has variance that she can request for, but that's no guarantee for her. If we reject... All three of us say... Or five of us say no, we don't agree to it, then she won't be able to do it. And whereas she's going to put her house in...
Yeah. So when you say "visible from public right-of-way," is that if someone's standing on the sidewalk looking into the yard?
Yes.
So if I was standing on Cortez, I'll be able to see the ADU then?
No, you won't in her case because she's not building... Because she has a driveway, and then the house will be built behind the driveway.
Yes, because her... I'll pull up her property on Google Street. Oops.
Yeah, I'll be able to see it from the public right-of-way.
You would not because that...
Where's Cortez? Where's the sidewalk?
I'll pull up her Google Street.
Okay.
Google it.
I guess her options are, one, is that, yes, she can go to subcommittee, but if subcommittee, the two people say no, she can actually come to planning commission. But if the three of us or five of us say no, then she doesn't have an option to build. And if she would walk that second route...
And cities...
And she can also go to city council as well, but if city council say no, then really she's stuck.
She can make, like they said earlier, 800 square foot without asking anyone.
The city council could tell us no right now. If we make this recommendation, the city council could override it, so...
That is true.
So we're not making a part of a decision.
So Cortez is right along here.
And where's her house?
Her property is here. So this is the private drive. So it's about...
It's a pretty long one.
A little bit more... A little bit less than 700 square.
I see what... I think what Nick was saying is that there are so many properties in various circumstances that will want the same thing, so...
Right. I mean, the property that's right in front of that falls into the same category conceivably.
As Madam Chair said, it's something that we can consider at the development code update. Doesn't necessarily have to be voted on tonight as part of this approval.
Joanne, I'm sorry. Nicholas had just pointed out something regarding the property in the front can do exactly what she can. I believe you cannot because they don't have a private driveway. Is that correct? Joanne, can you look into that?
Which property? This property?
No, the one way in the front, Cortez. That one. I mean, they have a frontage, so you need to have a driveway of your own.
No, they probably...
They would be visible from Cortez, which is a public right-of-way.
Right. So you cannot...
So they would not be...
Even though they have a private road, it would be visible off Cortez.
So it does not apply to everyone?
Would not apply to this particular...
It doesn't apply to the property in the front, basically.
Correct.
This code change.
And they would... And assuming that they don't build in the backyard, they'd be effectively prohibited much in the same way. So this is why I think... I understand the overarching desire, but realistically, you know, what I think that if we can, we can certainly craft a policy that creates certain presumptions and realistically, assuming that this doesn't... That having such exceptions or administrative review of some kind does not offend the statutory language that's currently in place. And who knows whether it does or doesn't? Realistically, I think there's going to end up being a letter-writing campaign between us and the California Department of Housing and Community Development if we do something like this that has that language in there. And perhaps it undermines some policy at the state level that we don't even understand at this point in time because it hasn't been concocted yet. And so I don't... You know, it's not to say that, you know, I think we should foreclose ourselves on that. Certainly not, but I definitely think that we ought to consider the fact that if we're going to implement such a policy, we certainly ought to have the opportunity for the community to opine on that, and realistically, if we can, have some sort of administrative process to go through. And realistically, I'm not all that concerned about ad hoc committee or anything... Or, excuse me, design review subcommittee denying these things. I mean, realistically, I think the three of us have been on there. I can count on probably one finger the number of denials I've seen through that process. And frankly, I think the overarching issue that probably would need to be addressed in this is something that only the council can address, and that would be the fee schedule associated with it so that applicants are not having to pay an arm and a leg just to have our subcommittee, if that is how some sort of statutory scheme was concocted, just to hear it. And I certainly understand that because that is a... That can be a daunting task in and of itself, and then, you know, you have the risk, well, you know, maybe this won't get approved or something like that. I mean, you know, again, my own anecdotes on design review subcommittee aside, I just don't think that there would be, from members of this community, some sort of aversion to that. That's my own personal viewpoint on this. Public hearing's closed.
Public hearing's closed. Sorry.
And city staff, is there... If someone needed a variance and they couldn't afford it, isn't there a process they could go through to get something else or some other...
I think they would have to go before the city council for a fee waiver.
Exactly. Okay, great. So that's an option, and so anyone who cannot afford it, that there is available options, there are city staff who will be more than happy to talk to you about if that's an issue too.
I'm sorry. Public hearing's closed. You know, are we here to approve this? Or, you know, it sounds like both of them have very unique properties, private roads. You know, are we to take this just to the subcommittee and, you know... I mean, I don't think that there are that many residents with their specific...
So before you tonight is approval of the resolution without those changes. The changes really are in response to the letter from HCD. If the planning commission chooses to make any changes, we can. They will then be subject to the city council and, at the very end of the day, HCD. So...
I'll make a motion to recommend the approval of code amendment number 22-02 with statutory exception, but at the same time, if city staff can mention the idea to the committee on...
Thursday.
Correct. So that's my motion.
I'd like to make a motions to approve the code amendment with the additions of the one on the screen, with the additions for the private lane.
Which item?
Which one was it? Joanne, can you pull up that screen? I didn't... I don't... We don't have it in here, I don't think.
No.
No, you don't have it in there.
Are we talking about Ms. Watson's property?
No. We're talking about that particular additions to...
I'm going to go ahead and second Commissioner Gutierrez's motion.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 22-6108 as proposed by... Recommended by staff. Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Commissioner Gutierrez.
Aye.
Commissioner Hing.
Are we going to vote on my motion?
We had a motion and a second for the first motion.
Okay. Oh, I guess aye.
I'm sorry?
Aye.
Aye. Vice Chair Lewis?
Aye.
And then Chair Becerra?
Aye.
Motion passes. Five oh.
Do you know, Paulina, can I... I guess toward the end of the calendar, can we schedule for talking about the garage and possibly having discussions about...
So part of the development code update, we are going to be having a subcommittee on Thursday, and I believe that was part of the motion was to bring... To have that be discussed at that time.
Okay. So the code, basically, on Thursday, we can have this code amendment again changed or try to get the change?
We will not be making... Approving a change. It'll be part of the discussion on changing the development code. And so that is a subcommittee with the city council and two members of the city council and two members of the planning commission. And so it's limited to those individuals. It's not necessarily an open meeting.
Chair, if I may, just to clarify, it's a subcommittee for the development code update, which if the subcommittee chooses to make this recommendation to the planning commission and city council, it would be part of the larger development code update, which is not due to be heard by the planning commission until either early or later on this year or next year or sometime next year.
If they decide to incorporate it, then maybe we can make an exception to approve. Would that be acceptable?
Well, the ordinance or the zoning change would not be effective until that is updated or adopted by the city council. So not until that whole development code is brought to the council and approved and adopted by council be effective. So if Ms. Watson wants, is on, you know, would like to, she could apply for a variance now and move forward with her request for an ADU at this time.
So we would have to either approve or she would have to apply for the variance?
Well, you would have to approve. City council would have to approve, and we'd have to...
Wait, but we didn't add her sections. We just voted on the code as is.
Correct.
We're not adding that little sections into it. So the only choice she has right now...
Is a variance.
Is a variance.
Or she can wait to see if and when the development code is adopted, which, as Joanne mentioned, probably a year, year and a half, two years away.
The variance process, and then there's also if there's someone's having a financial difficulty in paying the variance, then they could work with staff to go in front of the city council for a fee waiver.
So, I mean, should this even been brought before us if we're not able to even make a decision?
It was a request of the resident to bring it up before you this evening as we were discussing the specific ordinance.
Okay. Any other questions for staff?
I just have a final comment here on this. You know, I think one of the inherent problems with the situation that we're presented with in terms of having to consider changes from the state government on high, basically, for lack of a better way of putting it, at the end of a barrel of a gun. If we deviate from those changes, then we are subject to... We are subject to the same barrel coming and effectively aiming it at us again. And so ultimately, while I think there's certainly a desire to consider the changes for sort of non-conforming properties, I think we have to be very careful and consider it in terms of how we would do that. And I would, you know... Do I think a year and a half is absurd? Yeah, I agree. I think that's pretty absurd. So, I mean, but I do think that this body can certainly take it up well before then, and I'll certainly request that that is done. So before the end of this meeting.
It depends on the barrels, which lens that you're looking through at the end of the gun barrel, what have you. However, I think if the state had set certain criterias for us to do the ADU, maybe we should also take into considerations of what we can do to improve the overall for our city. One of the things that I was always concerned about is the parking issue. If we're taking all the garages, that's by state law that we have to allow to convert to ADU if they choose to, but also at the same time, as planning commissioner and as planning for the land use for the entire West Corina, we should also come out and say, hey, look, how can we improve it? Just by having everyone converting the garages, and now you no longer can park in the garage, then maybe we can have to be creative, and we need to talk about that. How can we be creative? And instead of like... It depends on which lens that you're looking through. Yes, we are presented with this situations, not by choice, but also, at the same time, I think we should take the opportunity to look at it. Like in his situations, if he had a carriage, garage, that he wants to put something on top of it, maybe we should look into that. Is it reasonable? Is it worthwhile for the communities to have these things, or is it not? I mean, maybe we should have a study session so that we can talk about that.
Yeah, well, yeah, because technically, today, what we voted on today had nothing to do with their, per se, what we were voting on regards to their property.
ADU law has changed, and we've been going through these changes for the last several years now. So this is probably the seventh or the 10th time that we've been working on the code. But what I'm saying is that, yes, the state present us an ADU, I wouldn't say a problem, but an ADU issues that we need to talk about. And yes, the state may not think about all the parking issues and all the other issues, but I think we should think about it and listen to some of the resident or what they want as well.
I don't think this even pertains to Mrs. Watson. She can park mall parking in her lot, so...
The city. Why is that? Because it's all the residents. The state is the prediction made for doing what ADU is carried. Why are you...
What Joanne explained is the way the zoning code is set up right now for residential properties, anyone asking for two stories, they automatically have to apply for that administrative use permit. They don't just get approval for it.
Point of order. I just have to mention, I think we're getting a little far afoot from the discussion, and I would just suggest that unless we're going to agendize something, we should probably move on and otherwise stick to the agenda. Otherwise, I believe we run afoul of state law. So that would be my concern. Why bring this point of order? Otherwise, I believe we run afoul of state law. So that would be my concern. Why bring this point of order?
We can follow up with you tomorrow if that's okay.
Or I think you stay at the end. I think we.
If you want to stay, we can answer any questions. We've already voted on the item. If you want to stay after or email Joanne for any questions or clarification. Thank you.
The Brown Act prevents them from, from going too off topic like that. So that's, that's why. If you stay afterwards, staff would be happy to talk to you.
Okay, so this action is final. Let's appeal to the city council within 10 days. And I'll move on to non-hearing items. We'll present the staff report for our next item.
Madam Chair, Joanne will present the report.
The item before you is the Art in Public Places Annual Report. And to go ahead and, I'll go ahead and first go over the, what project qualifies for the arts in public places ordinance. The, up on the projector are a list of projects that would be required to either construct or build public art or as part of their project or pay the in lieu fee. The in lieu fee is a fee that is paid in lieu of, of constructing the public art on the project site. And the in lieu, the in lieu fee paid goes to a public arts and public places fund. The in lieu fee contribution can be used for the, the purchase or the commission of installation of public art, maintenance of existing public artwork, our education programs or events, plaques or signage and so forth. Currently, there is approximately $297,000 in the Art in Public Places Fund. And staff is making a recommendation that the city utilize the Arts in Public Places Fund to one, maintain the existing public art, which the last, the last public art that the city commissioned was the West Covina Veterans Memorial that's located in the Civic Center Courtyard. It was constructed in 2016. And when it was brought, when it was first constructed, the, the, the city's art consultant recommended that this, the, that the West Covina Veterans Memorial undergo maintenance services every two to three years, which includes cleaning and also polishing and waxing of the, the steel that the memorial is made up of. And this has not been done. The last time the veterans, the West Covina Veterans Memorial was serviced was a year after it was, it was constructed, their staff had found some rusting that, that was, that, that was fixed in 2017. But since then, we have not done any service maintenance to the West Covina Veterans Memorial. Another aspect of the recommendation is to commission future artwork in the city. And staff is recommending that this planning commission identify a location of the future artwork. One of the locations that came up was the Orangewood Park Skate Park to, to commission a mural at the skate park since the skate park has been recently been having, I believe graffiti problems. So historically murals have, have, I guess, prevented certain undesirable graffiti from, from being done. And with this, also the creation of an Art in Public Places Subcommittee, which would then make the recommendation to the planning commission and city council on the, the artwork, the artwork in itself. The subcommittee would be made up of one member of the planning commission, one member of the city council, one member of the community and senior services commission, and also one staff member. With this, staff concludes his presentation. If the planning commission has any questions, staff is available to answer.
Thank you for the staff report. Does anyone have any questions for staff?
I, I don't see the in lieu fee of how much is it? The fees?
The in lieu fee that's been collected is, is the total in the Arts in Public Places Fund is $297,000.
Well, it's been collected already, but how much is the fee if the developer were to?
So the fee is based on the valuation of the project?
Yes.
And it depends on the type of project. So there you go. For.
It's not, it's not up there, but the in lieu fee is 0.5% if it is a residential project and 1% if it is a non-residential project. And it's the percentage of the, the total valuation of the project.
Thank you. 0.5% for residential and 1% for commercial.
That's correct.
Thank you.
0.5.
Half a percent.
Half a percent, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Commissioner Gutierrez, did he? Go to the restroom.
I think he stepped out.
Okay, so any members of the public like to speak on this discussion? Is there any discussion by the commission regarding this matter? Commissioner Williams, Ms. Planner?
No, I don't have a question.
Okay, so let's see, a motion in order to recommend the city council that the Art in Public Places Program for 2022 be adopted.
I guess I have a question before we adopt the resolution is that what was the old percentage that was collected?
Is not changing. This, the, the 200 something thousand dollars is the, is, is the money, the fund that has been collected from many different projects.
So since the inception of this, the city creating this public art and places ordinance, we finally have come to a place where we've collected through various projects that chose to not place public art on their project and instead pay the in lieu fee. So now we have that 297,000 that the city has collected. A part of that did go, there was additional funds in there that did go towards paying a majority portion of the West Covina Veterans Memorial. So that was commissioned through this program.
Thank you.
So there's a motion already in order. So at this time, do we pull the commission?
Was there a motion? Is there a second?
There a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Commissioner, oh, so a motion by Chair Becerra and then a second by Gutierrez to approve resolution number 22 dash 6109. Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Aye.
Commissioner Hing?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lewis? And then Chair Becerra?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay.
I, I would actually ask that, I think there needs to be a reconsideration of that because the resolution 22 dash 6109, I believe refers to the item, the next item on the.
You were right. I apologize.
I would motion to reconsider and, and I am very certain that we can't do that without actually.
Correct.
Congratulations, Nick. You're now the new city attorney.
There's no resolution.
To approve the Arts in Public Places Program as outlined in the staff report.
Motion.
That's my motion for reconsideration.
Okay, but Lewis, a second?
Well, so there's been a first, a second, a vote. I think the, you have to clarify the vote that just occurred and fix it.
Do you have to clarify that?
So to be clear, the, the first vote just was, there was a clair clair. So I believe the motion for reconsideration is correcting everybody's understanding of what's being voted on. So just to be thorough, a second vote makes sense. So Commissioner Lewis, could you repeat?
So I, I am, I'm asking us to reconsider the, the motion that we voted on that adopted the, I believe, resolution number, what was it, 22 dash 6109. And instead, we are approving the Arts in Public Places Program as outlined in the staff report.
Yeah, I will second that. So just to clarify, we're going to vote, void out the first vote. Correct.
So we have a third, or motion by.
Correct.
Chair Lewis, the second by Gutierrez. Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Aye.
Commissioner Hing?
Aye.
Vice Chair Nick, or Lewis, sorry.
Aye.
Chair Becerra?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, we have item number four. Paulina will present the staff report.
I will be presenting the staff report. So the item before you is the annual approval from the Planning Commission Agency, which is our planning commissioners, you guys, of the capital improvement project. And your approval tonight is for conformity with the general plan, the city's general plan. And so this is the capital improvement project or CIP project list that is part of the budget that has already been presented to the city council and will be approved as part of the budget in June when it's taken to the city council for final approval. So the projects for, the CIP projects for fiscal year 22, 23 include building and facilities, city hall parking lot resurfacing, city hall entry signs, police building repairs, fire station one replacement, city yard renovations, improvements to our sportsplex, improvements to the city yard roof. General CIP projects include city signage. Those are the entry and wave finding signages that welcome visitors and residents to the, to the city. Digital aerial data acquisition, repairs to the BKK detention basin. And it also includes a variety of CIP projects for our local parks, including restroom improvements, drinking fountain, picnic area improvements. It also lists the skate park mural that you guys included as part of the Art in Public Places right now. Security cameras and lighting, resurfacing of some of our tennis and basketball courts. And it also includes sewer, street and traffic improvements throughout the city. And that concludes my presentation. If you guys have any questions.
Does any commission have any questions for staff?
I guess I'm just looking at the spreadsheets and it looks like, Paulina. I guess we're, we're talking about all that improvements totaling $94 million. And for fiscal year 2023, we're looking at 17 million, almost 18 million. And then 24 is almost 18 million.
Yes.
So with all that improvements and then 25 is 5 millions and 26 is 5 millions and then 27 is 2 million.
Correct.
Are these funded already through all the taxes or?
There's a variety of funding sources for the CIP projects. Part of that is the American Recovery Funds that we received. That's one time. And this is, I think we got our second payment this year. And that's, you know, we're not going to be receiving that on an ongoing basis moving forward. It also includes funds from our citywide lightning and maintenance districts that go towards paying for the sewer improvement, street and gas tax money. So it's a variety of different funding sources, including general fund monies.
But total within the five years, we're planning to spend about $100 million for all the project that you mentioned earlier.
If I'm not mistaken, that is prior years.
Oh, for the six years ending.
I was just going to say, I don't really have any, any questions. I think the only concern that I have is that there seems to be, there are a couple of things that I guess I don't quite understand and I want to make sure I, I'm clear on this is are the traffic related funding allocations not available for other purposes? Are they only, so like for example, I, I see there's a proposal for a traffic signal on Cameron and Citrus.
Okay.
And I, you know, my, my only thing is I, I noticed that in the last fiscal year, our city yard does not have funding for its backup generator. And we're not fully funding the fire station one replacement. Frankly, I don't really think that that traffic light is that important. So that's why I'm asking, is there a way to change that?
It depends on the funding source. Some funding sources are restricted and have to go to specific uses. I'm.
For that particular project.
I'm looking.
Which appears to be fully funded.
And that's the Cameron intersection improvement? That's under streets? Am I not seeing it?
Yep, traffic.
No, under.
Any, that's for lights or cameras?
One citrus and Cameron?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I don't know about that. It is a dangerous intersection. When the kids are out after high school, I mean, after high school, when they're out of class, that's very high traffic congestion right there.
Are they all South Hill students?
It's funded for fiscal year 2023. That's, that's what it indicates.
Are you talking about Cameron Berenka traffic signal?
No, not Cameron Berenka. I'm talking about Cameron Citrus.
Citrus.
It's.
Oh, below, sorry.
Project number 23010.
Well, the good news is Fire Station One and City Yard isn't currently being, it's working its bidding process right now, right?
We are going through the surplus land, Dr. City Yard.
Yep. So that's the good news. So we'll be able to save some money in there.
But these are street money. It's from tax, the, it's street money, right? From the tax funding, road maintenance.
Sorry, I'm looking for the funding.
You know, also it's listed on this sheets here. I remember seeing this five, six years ago and it hasn't been built yet. So I, I don't know, it just gets carries on, but.
It says it's funded.
Yes, but I saw this five years ago too.
It wasn't, it wasn't funded in prior years. It is actively funded.
It was at the work for at least, you know, it's a long time in, in at work. So I don't know.
It is, that is funded and it is restricted funds. So it's not, we can't reallocate that for other than transit uses.
That's too bad.
Yeah, it's probably a grant.
All right, all motion approved as is, I guess.
And I'll second.
Okay, so the motion by Commissioner, or Vice Chair Lewis and a second by Commissioner Gutierrez to approve resolution number 22 dash 6109.
You got it.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Hing?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lewis?
Aye.
And then Chair Becerra?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Commission reports, comments, miscellaneous items. Tonight is the annual reorganization of the Planning Commission. A motion is in order to nominate Vice Chairperson Nicholas Lewis as Chairperson of the Planning Commission. We have.
I'll second.
Okay, I'm sorry, what was the question?
Wait, who did the first?
So I, I think.
I'll, I'll first.
Yeah. And then we'll do the chairs, Vice Chair separately?
We can do that.
Or combined? Okay, and I'll nominate myself as Vice Chair.
I'll second. Okay. So is that one combined motion?
Yes.
It's an amendment, I think it's an amendment to.
Yeah.
To Chairwoman Becerra's motion, right?
Well, I was going to say, is there a motion for Vice Chair, but thank you for taking the initiative.
Okay, you're making a motion to?
Yes, ma'am.
And I agree with that amendment.
Okay, I have a motion by Chair Becerra, seconded by Brian Gutierrez, to nominate Commissioner Lewis to Chair and Commissioner Gutierrez to Vice Chair. Commissioner Williams?
Okay, we're doing the motion together?
Yeah.
Aye.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Aye.
Commissioner Hing?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lewis?
Aye.
And Chair Becerra?
Aye.
Motion passes. So I think now we switch chairs.
Do we actually?
Or we don't have to switch chairs?
Actually switch chairs, but that's fine.
But you take over.
All right.
So you have, you're the newly elected, so you have to appoint two commissioners?
So, so for, for some continuity, I was, I was going to nominate current Vice Chair Brian Gutierrez and Shelby Williams, if she'll accept, for, for the Design Review Subcommittee.
She accepts.
Okay. So is there, does there need to be a motion on that? My script doesn't say.
Chair, if I may, also an alternate.
Okay. Any Sheena or, sorry, Commissioner Hing or now Commissioner Becerra, does either one of you want to serve as the alternate?
Sure.
Okay, so I'll nominate Commissioner Becerra as the alternate.
I believe a motion is necessary with that appointment.
Okay.
With their acceptance, would you say?
Okay, so I'll, I'll move for the appointment of Commissioner Gutierrez and Commissioner Williams as the primary members of the Design Review Subcommittee with Commissioner Becerra as the.
Alternate.
As the alternate.
Yes, I'm sorry, it wasn't clear. I don't think a motion is required, so.
Oh, I apologize. Okay, I misunderstood you. Okay, all right. Paulina, any, Paulina, any items to report to the commission?
Yes, thank you and congratulations. The next development Subcommittee, as we discussed earlier, is this Thursday, and so we will be meeting with the four members of that Subcommittee. Also, I wanted to provide a update on the housing element. As we, you know, discussed today, the letter we received from HCD regarding their ADU ordinance, we received a letter like that on our housing element, and I think we brought that before you guys. We are working with our consultant and are looking to finalize those responses to the letter and looking to have a town, or hosting a town hall meeting the week of 20, of May 23rd to go over those responses. So we will be finalizing a date and advertising it, and we'll let you, we'll inform the Planning Commissioners.
Just, just curious, unless anyone else has any questions right now? Any questions? The only question I had was pertaining to, I think there's, there was an indication that due to the fact that only, I think, five cities had, had timely updated their housing element, that there may be some legislation that has passed or maybe some administrative mechanism by which there is an extension so that our housing element isn't subject to attack. Is there any update on that?
Not at the moment, but I can certainly report back on that.
Okay, all right. Fair enough.
And that concludes my updates.
Thank you, Paulina. Paulina, any actions you'd like to speak to the commission about?
Yes, thank you. The project, The Grove at Merced, the 39 townhomes that was approved at the last Planning Commission meeting, will be taken to the May 17th City Council meeting for approval. And that's all for today.
Any questions? Seeing none, since there's no other business to consider at this meeting, the meeting is.
I think the public also wants to have some say in a public hearing at the end because she stays at the end.
We can adjourn the meeting, and once the meeting's adjourned, then.
Sure. Actually, I was going to say, if there, if there is an option, I did, I did want to propose looking at a potential ordinance change for purposes of addressing some of the exceptions under, under ADUs. So I don't know if that's something that we need to direct staff to potentially bring back, so it's not something that, that we're, we're doing on the fly. And I really think that that's the, the main issue that I see here is we, we need to do this in a considered manner so that we're not in a situation where we're subject to potential suit down the line, and that would be my biggest concern. So if, if there's consensus, maybe hopefully we can, we can kind of move that along. That'd be my preference.
I like motions to have discussions? Or?
I think so long as.
Be scheduled on the calendar?
I think direction from the chair is sufficient.
Okay, thank you.
I, there's, there's no objections or anything?
No.
Okay, sounds like there's consensus. Okay, seeing there's no other business, no other items anyone wants to bring up, I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting tonight. Thank you.